I will call to order the November twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three meeting. Can everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, a nation and not indivisible, for the liberty and justice for all. We have both call please. Mr. Lawton, present. Ms. Austin. Mr. Conboy.
Present.
Mr. Bradley. Mr. Rutherford.
Here.
Ms. Shane.
Here.
Mr. Zander.
Here.
If everyone's had a chance to review the July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes, and I'd like to put forth a motion to approve those meeting minutes.
Come on.
Can you do that?
Yes, I can.
Ms. Austin. Mr. Conboy. Mr. Rutherford.
Yes.
Ms. Shane.
Yes.
Mr. Zander.
Yes.
Ms. Lawton.
Yes.
Are there any public comments and questions outside of the Rocco's application today? Okay, looks like that's our first in only matter business day is eighteen South State Street preliminary final application for Rocco's distributor and Mr. Lanter.
I am ready, thank you. And you can get another court every time we show up. It's your short end. They're free. Dylan.
All right.
Very well.
Thank you.
And I can't learn anything. Welcome.
Sure.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out tonight. I know most of you, but those I have not met are both women architects. I have with me tonight as well Sean Stevens from our civil engineering team. In case there's any specific questions on the civil component. I very much appreciate you being here. I was just telling Jackie, I just finished my twenty-nine year in another province statute planning commission. So I understand fully what you're doing up there in your role and how hard it is to show up after dinner or without dinner and just be here. So thanks for coming out so important. I'm representing Jay and Salam, who are currently business owners in the township. They actually have Rocco's beverage already in the little strip center immediately to the west where we're trying to develop. We've been there for a while, but every time I go in there, the cluster forever gets about this narrow. And they had the opportunity to purchase Jack's Tavern. They bought the building, they're the owners of property. And they had the dream of owning around building and building a new building to really let them do their beverage distribution in a more appropriate manner. Jack's was not exactly stellar in its later years, it was a great place to begin. But you know, ninety-year-old building, we looked at keeping it and decided to spend a lot of money and really disturb it down into a brand new building site. So we're going to start from a fresh building. We have a site that is approximately a half an acre. I've got a couple of plans that you already have, but I called them up. The existing building is sitting in this configuration. You can see the outline of the property, rich streams jogging property line. We took the new building and we actually oriented along the easterly property line in a parallel manner instead of this one sitting in the middle. There were plenty of block changes at this point. Everything after this building is oriented parallel to the angle property. So we took it the same way it is. We also took advantage of the fact that there's currently no rear proper. There's a little garage building there. Next to the garage is a permanent pod, next to that is a permanent storage box. You see some pictures of that. So we want to get those out and tell you what requires where you are in the bathroom continues to residential district. So we wanted to make this one hundred percent zoning compliant. So we introduced, I'm not sure I had to because really is existing legal or not performing. But we introduced a full thirty door planted buffer. The only neighbor immediately to rear is David, who actually had the courtesy of coming to our office and meeting with us and reviewing the plan. He lives in the very last house on Green Hill, which has the rear driveway, the side driveway. So we had a nice conversation, I'm sure he'll something to say one more this evening.
Which one is that?
He would be immediately right here. Immediately to the end. In fact, if you look at the little packages. That little corner here, I see a package, I believe. Twenty-three Green Hill Road. Under area, I should have. That's the end of that long road, which is serviced by a rear alley, which is an alley that has crosses the ranks for all neighbors. And he's at the end of the road. Of course, he's also below spots, so every time it rains, he keeps punting. Most of the flooding comes down Green Hill Road to the north, but I think he did some in the back of our site. So by taking the paving off the back of the site, I didn't know we did it. And introducing more landscaping, in fact, that I think I've eliminated anything that's relevant from our property going this direction. So I don't want to contribute his problems in the back. We're proposing putting up a building that is, by the way, the existing building is four thousand one hundred and seventy-nine square feet. But there's also the six hundred and twenty-five square foot garage, the permanent cooler building at two hundred square feet, and the shipping container at a hundred and sixty square feet. So you add all those up, it's a little bigger than it looks. Our new proposal is for five thousand four hundred and thirty-six square feet. But that includes six hundred square feet, a very under the tower element, it's outside, and a little area underneath covered walkway. So we're actually, we're actually only six hundred and fifty-seven square feet larger than our new drive-in building. The beauty is that we're able to reduce the impervious surface of the site. Site started out with eighty-four point five percent impervious. And with our reconfiguration, we dropped to sixty-two point eight percent of impervious. We have significant impervious reduction on the site, which is always nice when you can do that. The image of the building is basically still under development. But we did some images in black and white to get you an idea of what we're trying to accomplish. We're trying to introduce something a little more contemporary retail. I mean, this stretch of Providence Road and State are really just old buildings lumping along for the most part on very small undersized lots. This lot's slightly bigger, most of the lots are ten thousand square feet. This one's close to a half an acre, twenty-four thousand square feet. So we've advantaged a little more room to wiggle. And I didn't want to just put, I didn't want to put a facelift on the existing buildings, we want something new. Colors are still being developed, but I want you to see a quick idea of what we're trying to do. So this is not a little shack like Jack. I think you saw these images, but if you have these in the folder. This is a great idea to give you an example of existing. I'm going to go right side up. You can see the existing auto repair. You can see the existing strip center in Rocco's is on the westerly end. You can see Jack's tavern. There is a law office and a barber shop going farther down. Across the street are some of the growing narrow apartments and two other buildings that are, I'm not quite sure. Behind that, you've got the Otto's car right there. And then, of course, the site that's currently fallow, although every utility company in the world likes to use it for pipes and backhoes and everything else, which theoretically a hotel, not sure what its future really is, but another site across the street. If you look at the pictures in the folder. Going with the first picture, first picture is the strip center where Rocco's has been located on the left-hand side of the picture. There's a nail salon, there's a super walk, some cleaners following the end of the building. Next photograph is of the car repair. You guys still get the Diesel Diesel, it's the old name of the place. Did nothing to those guys here, isn't that car repair? Followed by another picture, car repair. Using the same words in the book. There's Jack's building with this neat yellow suffered color. Appreciate the yellow. It has an apartment above it currently. We first started this project with an apartment above it, but determined that we would have to sprinkle the entire building if we had an apartment. Didn't seem to make a lot of sense financially to do it. So we had now a one-story building where it's just had the apartment above it. Some more pictures of Jack's. More pictures, looking around it. And next shot is the building across the street. I'm referring to those two buildings, I don't know exactly who's in them. Across the street, across probably two. Working back around the side of Jack's. Going towards the rear of Jack's. This is the five, I call them apartments, they're two stories each, which are located immediately to the westerly side of the parcel of the river. They do quite a bit of, it's sort of four out of five or halfway house between rug rehab and the community. They enjoy them right now. That's another picture of them. And then finally the garage building in back of Jack's Tavern. And then the famous storage space, which has been a fixture for a long time. What's on, I actually have a couple of shots up and down State Road, looking down towards the east and then looking up towards the west. So kind of trying to give you a flavor, you certainly know the area, but I think the photos help you see it in detail. We received a, by the way, we worked really hard to make this a zoning compliant plan. The goal is to make it a compliant, all the setbacks, all the impertuits. We're in, you said, we're actually below the threshold, we're allowed there. The rear yard setback, pardon, actually this plan still carries two surplus spaces because we had the apartment on top. We had this quarter with two spaces, so we need eleven, we have thirteen. There was a really interesting piece on the plan we discovered. This little thing I'm tracing with my fingers, twenty-foot wide vehicular easement in favor of Jack's Tavern, giving access to Green Hill Road. The beauty is everybody on State, it's always backing in and out of state province, it's a disaster. Allowed enough room for a beer truck to be able to pull up the loads and actually circulate back through the sites. You're always worried about circulation, these vehicles. That gave me the ability to use this permanent easement to actually go to Green Hill. Another interesting anomaly in the site is there are four parking spaces on that side of the easement in favor of the apartment building to the rear. This thing is all over the place, easements and crosses and it's off our property. But we've, we kept this twenty-foot easement at a halfway through, so I have circulation for deliveries to my site. We've received a review letter from Mr. Kelly's office. Day November thirteenth, I know you have a copy. And I'll follow Mr. Kelly's lead, whether he would like me to just give a true letter or if he would like to address the letter or stuff.
I just realized that planning commission did not get copies. We sent it, I guess, last week. I'm going to tell you upfront, there's no surprises, so we can probably just step through it if you have questions.
There's only, I think there was only eight things, we could hit all if they.
Yeah, we'll just step, if planning commission's okay, then we'll just step through the review letter. Again, there's no big surprises here. So if you're okay with that, then I apologize for you not having copies, I thought you did.
If you're okay with that, right?
Yeah.
Would you like me to step through it?
Yeah, let's just step through it. I mean, there's not, again, there's no surprise.
I always like short review letters. What Mr. Kelly did was he first of all discussed what was on the site and he repeats the five thousand four hundred and thirty-six square foot retail building. He talks about the installation of the thirty-foot landscape buffer in the rear, revised parking layout, and the existing driveway is the same driveway. We kept the driveway exactly where the driveway's always been, we didn't change it. It's the right width, it works, it's got great sightline distances, so we maintained that driveway that's always been there for the new project. He goes through his review comments. I'm going to skip the waivers for one second and go to the eight comments if I could in the review itself, and I'll go back to the waiver request. He states the, what we all know is it, we need to check in and pad out to see if there has been HOP issued for Jack's Tavern, find one. And if not, just rewater it. Technically, we're not changing the driveway, we're reducing traffic flow, so I'm not sure there's any real topics there. Unfortunately, we have great sightline distances at that location. We need to satisfy the township fire marshal. And I reached out to Alan Mansell, and Alan has looked at the plan. I haven't seen a formal letter, but he indicated that this file is developed in the plan. I'm sure you've got the council on board. There's a stormwater management report. This is an interesting site. In fact, I'm going to let Sean talk for one second. This splits two water sheds. This literally is on the crown of Ridley Creek and the Crumb Creek water sheds, which always makes life interesting. So everything one side drains one way, the other side drains the other way. And any specific comment on that?
So I'd like to bring up a couple items. So pre and post conditions, the, there will be more area getting to Crumb in the post-condition than there was the precondition. Nice thing is because the site was completely paved before, we're able to control the stormwater and meet both regulations and both Crumb Creek and Ridley Creek in the post-develop condition. Real quick, on the site currently, about half of the building and right down the middle of the building, you can see there was like this high point. This area goes to Crumb, the rest of the area goes to Ridley Creek. In the post-develop condition, we are catching all the roof leaders for the whole building. We only have roof leaders going across the front side and rear, draining to an infiltration bed, which we tested for, and it's located right in the front. And then for Ridley Creek, we only have this area of pavement, which is just milling and overlaying. So there's not really any development there, but in my calculation, it is counted as the service. So even though we're not really deserving, it's counted as the service, so we're improving it anyway. And then the rear here was asphalt currently draining back towards, towards Green Hill and the depression back here. But now we're, we have it as a green space, so this green space will have a lot less water getting to it versus this whole asphalt end building area, which is now this green space heading back to the rear. So the calculations in the stormwater report are going to be not adding up to each other right off the bat because we do have more area getting to one thing. So it's actually a very interesting site, it's only the third, it's not a sixth, it's a fourth.
Just gives it everything. And you work to the regulations of the watershed, the specific regulations of that watershed?
To both individual watersheds, pre and post.
Here's a picture, I don't even want to apologize, but this is a picture of the back of Green Hill Road. You can see the pond, this is today after the storm of yesterday. You can see David's back driveway, which is at the end of the long driveway, he does pond. So I'm really thinking we can really correct that situation, at least from our end. I can't fix what's coming down Green Hill from the north, but I can certainly fix it, we don't add any contribution to it. We took this just to give you a flavor of what, what actually he faces out there as far as some potting in the rear. He is the lowest spot in the world on all three, as you presented it to us from Matt Low. With that comment, there's a standard comment about having an operation and maintenance agreement for perpetual maintenance of stormwater, and of course, we do that on every single project for inspection and maintenance. And there's normally a fund associated with that as well. The comment number. Comment number four I skipped. We propose a small curb on the westerly side of the property. And by the way, JP was kind enough to meet me and walk the site with me, so we walked the entire site together. And our concern is this is so dead level every year, it's just literally dead level, that we were worried we might be trapping some water against that curb. And that's literally just asphalt right up against the, it continues right into the car repair. So we're just going to take the curb out. There's no reason, cars are parked in there now, there's no reason for a curb, we're going to take it out and eliminate any possible traffic of water. I will still put the curb on this side so people don't run over the lawn. We have a handicap, inaccessible parking space and a direct little area going in, the loading zone. So we'll curb this, we won't curb the westerly side, so I can eliminate the concern about trapping any water. And by the way, there's currently no stormwater management on the site at all. It just runs unimpeded. So what we're doing is a huge improvement, not only are we reducing it twenty-two percent of impervious, we're actually controlling the stormwater and directing it to a location which is a groundwater recharge bed. So this is huge improvement for the world. That's a lot of sales pitch, that's a reality. The only other two comments, sorry, the last three comments, one was eliminate the curb. Grading utility plan indicates proposed gradient flows towards a proposed curb, curb is gone. And Sean addressed the comment about the roof, the roof water is one hundred percent going towards the groundwater recharge. Nothing on the rear of the site that's going to just flow that way, it's all going to go into piping into the front bit. And I didn't know, there was a comment I didn't know, was boilerplate or specific this site, number eight, final comment. The applicant and the township solicitor shall discuss and settle outstanding debt, fees, taxes, or other money owed or outstanding obligations subject to this property. Is that based on something you researched or is that?
Well, it's based on history, but not on this site in particular, so it is, it's boilerplate.
Okay, all right, I wasn't sure if it was a known issue that I was not aware of. You're okay, appreciate it, okay. So that was the known issue. There are several waiver requests. One of which is I'm asking you to, unless you want to come back and review the plan, to allow us to consolidate from during the final on these projects and applications. Again, I frankly would hope we could do it, I try on, let's face it, they're mom and pop businesses, I try to keep our numbers down. If I don't have to show up again, I don't charge them. If you're comfortable this evening, you know, with this particular application, of course, subject to all the conditions or listing of the engineer's letter in your comments, I'd like to try to make this a preliminary slash final. We talked about.
I can talk about number two if you want.
I think we've covered it, it was simply a request that we're working to the, go ahead, discuss it because I'm.
Waiver number two was from section twelve thirty nineteen for stormwater management. Most of you have probably been aware before, there's actually two stormwater sections within the code, we're just asking from a waiver for one to use the waiver for the other. We've been up here before, I don't need to rehash that one. But the one requires meadow condition versus the existing conditions. We're asking to follow the one that uses the actual existing conditions on the site. That was the waiver requested.
That was actually granted when the hotel went through the planning commission, it's exact request.
And the Wawa too, we did that one also.
That's true, then the Wawa, so that was a fairly a.
Yeah, it's just because there's two, yeah, it's the two scene sections.
Number three, third of the four waivers, is an interesting one. There's a disconnect in this township, which I can face all the time, between the subdivision land development SADO code and the zoning code. So the zoning code says that you need to maintain a thirty-foot rear yard buffer, planted buffer, which we've complied with. The SADO code says you need to maintain a fifty-foot rear yard planted buffer. The SADO code also says if you have a business that is similar to yours in nature or character, you need a twenty-five-foot side yard buffer. So if I apply all the buffers that are required under code, I have to take out everything in this little exhibit in the pink here, which means I've lost two-thirds of my site. And if I applied it to some of the ten thousand square foot sites on Province Road, you couldn't build anything. But I'm down to simply this little piece in the middle, all this has to come out if I comply with the buffers in the SADO. SADO, of course, is waivable by the township council. Your recommendation is important. But if it was in zoning, it's not waivable at the variance in front of zoning here anymore. But there's a real disconnect between, in many places in the codes, and everybody's trying to work the fixing here, between the SADO and the zoning, the zoning regulations. So we comply with full zoning, we have to. That's the third request, and the final request is the same. Oh yeah, the third and fourth are tied to both ones for continuous to residential, one's continuous to civil businesses. So different numbers based upon, that section's twelve thirty. Eighteen thirty-three, twelve thirty, eighteen thirty-four. Okay. And that's what I, that's what I have on the review there. Wish you had a copy of this, but.
Fine.
It's a little ground word, second, talking to my thing. I don't have anything else specific on the presentation or the engineer's review letter. Again, it is zoning compliant.
So you have to go before zoning at all then, okay. So how, we'll ask our questions first, then I'll open it up to any public questions. JP, did anything to add for us, or were we asked?
No, I mean, we just went through the, through the review letter, it's as simple as that. Yeah, I can wait to the end before you formulate your ultimate opinion.
So I just had a question, is there a fence currently between the property in the back? Like is that a fence I saw in the pictures here, or is that going to be a planning buffer there?
It's a chain link fence, very bad condition, it waters across the property line a couple of places. We are proposing in a new five-foot eyes, we'll paint the fence final, and David prefers tan everywhere. We'll do tan fence. Square tans? Tans, tans of it. So yeah, so that's just being with David. And we're planning double rolled trees as well.
And then the easement, I know there's a lot of easements on this property. Did you say there's one going across from going out to Green Hill Road, is that your easement here?
Yes, that's a twenty-foot wide.
That's the one that goes out across the other property, that's your easement already granted?
Yes.
Okay, good, so we should understand.
That was written in the nineteen sixty's. So there's a, and I'm going to use that for my vehicular circulation, so I didn't park in front of it for a reason. Except lets me get in and out of my parking field with any kind of delivery truck or anything else with that access.
One of the things I always look at with anything, just because I want to make sure we cover our bases and do our due diligence, is the delivery times of the trucks, what happens now with the current store.
Three AM to three thirty AM is our preference. What's your delivery time of your trucks?
After COVID is not a fixed time. And sometimes, mostly they show up, you know, early, between ten to two o'clock.
Nothing before eight AM? Nothing, you're not, nothing after, let's put this on the record, nothing before eight AM, nothing after six o'clock PM?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Between eight and six, we just established it for the record.
And I know you talked about waiver number three, and since you pointed out what it would exist like if that wasn't waived, that property is actually already out of compliance with a waiver from what I see with the current building, right?
Correct, yes, correct.
Probably because of how old the building is, but that makes sense.
Yeah, and we actually, we actually kept, we pulled it forward and we created a, we created better buffers than just today, and they are zoning compliant, that's what I try to do. By the way, I'll put that note about the times of delivery on the plan, I'm just, I'll add it to the actual plan, so there's something recorded with those delivery times.
Okay. And I'll open it up to my other members to have questions, so.
Bob, I just have a couple of questions regarding to the curbing that you want to remove there?
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at the picture. The full page picture of Rocco's burger.
Yes.
If they, how does the property drain if you started the Rocco beverage sign saying a heavy rain? Would that be moving over toward the property next door that appears to be the auto repair shop?
And by the way, they also own the auto repair shop, they bought both buildings together, so they're the owners of both properties.
Okay, well, that might be gate, some of my questions, but I was concerned that we're going to, you're going to set up a technical trespass there, water's going to just be flowing into the neighbor's property.
There is some water already migrates across this little pretty picture we drew, there will not be a green triangle there. We would end it, in fact, I tried to color it. I'm simply going to put the landscaping out in this little piece out front here, and I would not change the mechanics already there. It just, it literally just sits there, it's not a lot, but again, we're taking all the water that's currently flowing from the rainwater conductors, and it's flowing that way and putting that in that out front. So I'm going to eliminate most of the volume of water that's going out there.
Okay, if they owned the property next door, I wouldn't throw the question, it didn't register with me, you did say that earlier.
No, no, I would love to say that when we did do some light survey work out here, we did notice, it doesn't really show up on the plan very, very easily because the site is so flat, that the water right now looks like it's draining right towards this building because when you look at the contour lines, what actually happens is there's actually a low point that runs right along the edge of this building. So there's like a chunk, there's a piece of sidewalk and some asphalt that's kind of goes down to a low berm, maybe only four, six inches. So this, this rainwater comes along, runs along the side of the building and heads on down to Green Hill right now. So it doesn't actually flow through the building. And like I said, we're not really going to completely repave here, just more milling and overlaying, so that, that gully, for lack of a better term, is to remain and just go around the building and head out to Green Hill also.
Thank you.
Is there wastewater drainage on Green Hill?
Is there?
How do we, how's the wastewater, or the stormwater, excuse me, traded on Green Hill?
There's not, there's no agreement in place, this property's existed for seventy years and together. There's no, I mean, everything over there, the agreement is, right now we dump all our water across the both State Road and we dump our water at the, de facto is what's happening at the repair shop. The improved version of it means we are able to grab some of that water, especially all the roof water and harness it underground and recharge. And again, we do have a twenty-some percent reduction in impervious, which is helping everybody, especially the rear of the property.
I have a question actually, following on as far as, and you had mentioned the impervious space that's been reduced. And so the question that I have there is with the two water sheds, you had mentioned earlier that there's a little bit more that goes towards one versus the other. And I was just wondering if you kind of broke it down by how much of that impervious space is actually being able to be utilized in order to store that stormwater that's being diverted in that area a little bit more in that direction? Or do you have that breakdown? And that's, I just want to kind of get an idea of that.
That's the stormwater report. I think the bottom line, you asked me this, neither watershed will receive as much water as it currently receives because of the impervious reduction. So both water sheds are going to benefit from us removing asphalt, taping, and building. So the net, the net effect of this development is, we number one, are not putting any water between Green Hill Road, which to me is important, especially you see these potting pictures. And number two, neither stormwater or Crumb Creek is seeing any water, it's not cement, it's not concrete, it's just. And that's, I mean, a couple hundred square feet you're right. So we could probably not even said we have two water sheds, that happens everywhere the line is, that's the high point of the water.
I will say that, I didn't realize it was a water shed, I'm sorry.
Okay, it's like the Rocky Mountains, it's the great divide.
Well, I figured that with the additional greens. Well, I figured that with the additional green space and everything else, that there was gonna be a reduction. I was just wondering if there was an idea of how much was reduced.
I don't think we have, I think the stormwater report is detailed, but I don't think we have that memo last week. I know Mr. Kelly's office does have that report.
And it is included in the report, Ridley Creek, sixteen thousand eighty-nine square feet, pre eleven thousand one hundred and six, plus, from sixty-two forty-one, six thousand four hundred and forty-one square feet, versus five thousand four hundred and thirty-six.
Five thousand four hundred and thirty-six, that's the amount that's being recharged, that's the building itself.
Right.
And then, so I'm good with that. The other question I had actually, JP, I think it might be a question for you. I know that we had mentioned that with that first waiver, also been existing for, the people's are been approved for the hotel and also for Wawa. With this other one, not, with the fifty feet behind, the ten feet on the sides, is there any other properties that we've looked at that had that waived also?
Well, it was specific to being both watersheds, so it really depends on the topography. So there are two main, that this planning commission has looked at, two main site developments. It really helps with the modeling. To the naked eye, I don't think you're ever gonna, you know, we say, it really won't. But it just helps with the modeling and the way, the way they route the storm through their control facility. When it comes to residential development, I don't recall where we may have, where we may have split before, waived one watershed versus the other.
I think you were also asking though about the buffering, am I correct?
Yeah.
The question JP was asking as well, sorry, the buffering of, if you, if the commission's waived buffering, I know you've waited for me several times because you can't comply with it. I mean, it's not to be arrogant about it, but you know, Kevin Madsen, who's the, is the engineer at Media Borough, he worked on the comp plan at Media Borough. He said, we're keeping a list of oddities and anomalies as we start the new comp plan to see what the heck's there. There's a long list of oddities and anomalies in the zoning code of our township. And I think, you know, I'm here strictly as a private architect, and I am the zoning officer, so I get to play with his oddities and anomalies all the time. And the fence ordinance alone is a nightmare, so we wrote with Carl's help, new language in the fence ordinance, and fixed it up, because it was all moving at the place. We had so many applicants going in front of zoning areas with fence ordinance. The opacity, the lack of opacity, and we finally got to the point where we identified most of the primary street. There's other sections being worked on as well, there's zoning. But I think the subdivision land development ordinance needs a really hard look as well, because it's completely inconsistent within itself and inconsistent with the zoning ordinance many places in the township. This zoning ordinance is written by Ron Turner and Tina Mason's help. It's a fine ordinance, it has very unique habits, written this very different type of ordinance in this township. We won't see any others like it. And suggesting that'd be a great job for the planning commission to look at subdivision land development ordinance, keep a list of things that people like me are saying, this is a problem, we need to address it, and perhaps go back and spend some time with it. So I didn't need to editorialize, but it's the reality of the ordinances.
Yeah.
I have a question. There's a bit of wire breaking to bear with me. Is there any known contamination on parcel that will be disturbed?
No.
Has it been a phase one or two?
There was a phase one, there's not a two, I mean, it's been, it's been the same building, less, still here. It's been, it's been a war.
I'm thinking more along the lines of the property line with the mechanic shop.
No, we haven't done, we haven't done anything as far as checking that out. I mean, I tell you, across the street at the hotel, we did check that out, and there was absolutely zero of anything. We were mostly concerned, there was a dry cleaner. It's strip center for years, and we were waiting to drive in front of, speaking of, they'll migrate everywhere. We got no dry cleaning, we got no petrochemicals, we got no fuel. Of course, there were several gas stations there, I'm an old guy, so I remember some of these. We're now selling, Korean, that was a gas station. And we didn't get anything at all on that major site across the street, but I haven't done any environmental things.
Okay, and when we talk about the disturbance, I know we're saying it's a technical definition of a disturbance, but you're only painting, right? You're just, you're tearing down, or are you modifying the land where the new building is being put in?
There's a small basement for mechanicals, but there's a basement under the existing building as well. So both buildings had a basement.
Sure.
We are going to be digging a little bit deeper to put stormwater management back in the ground in the front. So yes, whenever you do stormwater recharge, we're gonna be going below the asphalt layer to create that bed. But that's the only thing we're actually physically doing on the site.
And I would like to point out that for the, when I was talking about the technical definition of the earth disturbance versus what I calculated in the stormwater management report, I calculated basically as the whole site being disturbed to an extent, and then us, us, the whole site getting disturbed, and then us repaving the site. Well, we actually did the grading, we realized we didn't really have to disturb the whole site, so they could disturb the whole site and still need the ordinance, but we don't think they have to. We don't, on our grading plan, we don't have them disturbing the whole site, going towards the auto center, the front left, the front corner going towards the auto center, and then the back towards the, towards the townhomes, we don't have them disturbing, we just keep as is.
Okay, thank you. Can we, shifting gears, talk about the location of the trash relative to the building that you mentioned was used as a halfway house? Have you reached out to the owner of the halfway house, the tenants that are there? I mean, the proximity of, what I assume is going to be a dumpster.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be an enclosure, it's gonna be a block wall enclosure around the trash dumpster, which I'm gonna do with gates on the front of it. I mean, I don't wanna obviously put it anywhere else, because I don't want anyone to buy a buffer. I don't wanna put it up front, we put it in a place you can easily pick it up and remove it. This location next to the building, next to the loading area. I'm open for ideas.
You may not want to move it, but if I'm using just a real rough rule of thumb here, there's ten feet, maybe fifteen feet between the dumpster and the edge of the building that somebody lives in, somebody's living with.
Correct.
Is there nowhere else the trash location could go?
If I put it here, I'm in front of their front doors.
Well, I mean, you say it's a big parcel, it's almost half an acre, you can't put a trash anywhere else.
I'm open for ideas.
Well, you're a specialist, I'm just pointing this out.
Normally I would go around the behind, but I'm trying to keep the thirty-foot buffers.
No, I understand.
Yes.
Look, I mean, I understand the rationale behind why you chose the location you did. I'm imploring you to consider alternatives that aren't as close to somebody's living arrangement.
Well, I could put, I could put it over here, because I don't need the space, I could put it up here in this location. I'm sorry, I can't show you where it was, I could put it over here instead. I don't have a problem putting it there if you think that's better. Biggest problem is I try to get somewhere you can pull in and pick it up and then go back. This is an ideal location, because it's straight shot in and out. We can put it over here against the side of the garage.
I think the neighborhood might appreciate that, even though if they're not in attendance here tonight, they might appreciate you considering that.
I wish they would do a better job frankly maintaining this building, because there's all kinds of junk hole over front of the doors, so.
Oh, sure, I mean, well, it's possible, for example.
Not clean, not clean, but I will, I will, I will, and when I say I'll take another advisement, this board knows me, I do actually look at it, I'll take a hard look and see if I can maybe shift it over there. I don't have a plan with.
I'd like to point out too, that with a beer sherry, they're gonna be mainly paper products, and not like Jack's Tavern it was before, there's not gonna be food products or anything like that. And it's mainly gonna be cardboard boxes and plastics.
Where's Jack's Tavern's current trash location, do you know?
They have him sitting next to the garage in the rear. Maybe one of the four, two, three.
Same, almost the same place?
A little farther back.
Okay.
I just have two more comments to make. The first is, it's just minor, it's not an obligation, but it is an encouragement I have with any business that wants to put handicapped accessible parking at their facility. The logo of the actual handicapped space is a generational. And while it's not a requirement in Pennsylvania, New York State has an updated logo called the Dynamic Accessibility Logo. And it's just a request that.
Can you send me a copy there?
I'd be happy to, yes. I can probably send it vicariously through the commission's.
Yeah, because the thing is, the ANSI standards tell you a lot about what it has to be ANSI one seventeen, but they don't specifically, I think, regulate the style of it. They just tell you size and how high it's gonna, and if you know, it sounds like you have rented about it. First space has to be bad accessible. The code's funny, the IVC says, one out of eight spaces must be bad accessible, comma, minimum one. So the very first one is the eight-foot transfer aisle, which we put in a very nice, less than two percent location on the slope, and way next to the front doors. We made it quite convenient, but I'm happy with it.
It's as, it's as simple as just updating the logo. Yeah, and I'll happily share with you, I think it's just, it's a new standard, yeah.
You got my card?
Yep, I sure do. And then the last thing, and then I'll stop Steve Rilling, is just a question about, a request or at least an observation about the plan with the trees. I appreciate the amount of the buffer and the thirty-foot in the rear. Specifically, I'm thinking about the curb appeal of that stretch of state road. Free trees in the front of the building, I think, is not as ambitious as I would have liked to see.
The problem is I've got a retail store. So if I start putting trees out there, and I face this in Springfield all the time with the car dealerships, we just did it for them. I blocked, I blocked this for the retail, I've gotta have somewhere you see those windows, I gotta be able to look at the front of this to get some curb appeal. I like it when the trees go up a little farther, because they kind of honor the limits, looking below the tree canopies. If you have some specific recommendations for maybe to put some lower bushes out there, I have no problem with that either. And the problem when I start putting bushes though, is then I can't have a lawn, I can't cut the lawn, and I'm always weeding the lawn there. So I'll take, I'll take another look. We focus most of ours here, and you're right, we only have three. But I only have a hundred and ten foot of frontage and twenty-eight foot, that's a driveway, so.
I appreciate the challenge, I gotta tell you, nothing gets me more excited than ambitious foliage, all right?
Ambitious foliage?
Yes, but just if you take that into an advisement, I would appreciate it.
I like it, I like the ambitious foliage.
For the Upper Providence SADO, it's one tree per every fifty linear feet of frontage. With a hundred and ten feet, you require two point, two point one trees, and we have the third trees out there.
The point one tree is obviously a scratch.
Meeting the minimum plus rounding is not that exciting to me.
Okay.
All right.
All right, but we also did, I think there's a driveway in this, so we also put some log shrubs along the easterly edge. Beyond that, this is of course the parking field on this side, except for the dumpster, which is now there.
You guys are doing a great job, the building looks beautiful, it'd be nice if the landscape similarly looked beautiful.
You sound like you're my profession.
I might be.
Another thing just to take into consideration, I probably would not make this a condition, which is something to think about, is I know that this store can get busy during holidays, and you might just wanna talk to your neighbor who owns those five units. They, or they might wanna talk about just having their space to say resident only or something. That way, it's just, because God forbid the spaces are filled and it causes trouble for your business owners, you know, like, you don't, just try and avoid an issue there, that's all. Not that it will be a condition of our.
Right now they're surviving the two parking spaces.
Okay, yeah, so I don't know what their plans are with that piece of property, but.
We actually talked about their volume of cars, and I actually think during the holidays, Jack's Tavern did a lot more parking overflow than they're gonna do, because you know, you're in and you're out. You know, it's a ten-minute exercise, and it's actually nine minutes down, because you're next to the store without turning sideways.
Yeah.
Ten minutes in and out, we actually thought the eleven spaces was, you know, they only have three staff. So we thought the eight spaces was more than needed. At the actual zoning words, we also thought, I have no problem if there's an issue in putting some resident-only parking.
Okay, but I don't, but I don't know if that's the situation there, so. Is anybody else?
Not that it's installed, sorry, the parking, residential parking's not installed, a signage identifying to parking.
I was thinking if people are living there, if everybody, I just know one of those people goes out to get my drinks at the last minute before a party, it's a thing like a holiday. And at least not, I know their store's busy, but like.
This is sort of indicative of what I've seen, I've been out there a dozen times. I get three or four cars tops on that, on that cluster, because, just because of who, this has been, this, this particular building has housed the same people for a long, long time. There's also four spaces over here, which are easemented into easemented, there's a new adverb. These people have the right to park over here as well, so this, this building actually has like eight parking spaces. And they don't, that's about what you're gonna see if you drive out there at any time, about three cars. So we'll certainly take a look at it. These two cars for the parking, these two spaces, in some of this unit, you were pointing out how close we are, that's actually our property, they're gonna lose those two, because that's where we're gonna put two against there, and then maybe the rest of the, but they also own these on the side of the street. Love the conversation with them, it's part of being a good neighbor, I think, so.
Okay. I have a quick question. Currently, it's, it's all paved up to the street? And a lot of people, I mean, people walk there all the time, the grass and the curb come all the way out to the street, it wasn't a consideration for the sidewalk?
The problem is, and I looked at this with JP in detail, we're afraid we're gonna trap here if we do. There's an actual nice, it's been there forever, there's no sidewalk, so five and a half foot wide mechanic strip before you get to the actual weight line, the people walk all the time on. And we didn't wanna elevate it and start trapping water along state, because it's so flat in there. So we were just trying to leave the path. Last two photographs in your package, you get a pretty good shot of that actually. This gives you a pretty good shot of that area close there. And there's another shot going the other direction as well. So there's a good walking path, but we just don't wanna trap the water and start to ice it or pond it there. There's not a good shot of, across here, between the phone pole here. We are taking out these two planters, and, you know, and cleaning that up. The driveway mound stays the same place, but there are, there is full sidewalks on the other side of the street all the way across, and the plan when we were doing the hotel was to install sidewalks along that side of the street to have one impeded path all the way from the corners, they have one side all the way down. But we're just worried about, about stormwater and starting traffic or icing it up. And of course, the next built property, what's going on, I don't know what you're walking here, really. It's all back out onto the pedestrian, you know, on the next property up. This, this is, this, to me, the worst kind of scenario you possibly get when you're backing out along the, people walking, moving the other side of the street.
Can I open up to any, is there any public comment or questions?
I'm glad the issue of sidewalks came up, because I noticed that same thing about no sidewalk in the front on the state road side.
Sorry, so do you mind saying your name and just your property address?
My name is Dave Tazey, I live at twenty-three Green Hill Road.
Thank you.
The back of my property connects with the back of this property, I have a question. My wife and I are hikers and walkers. We walk the entire Upper Providence Township at some point in time. And just from the point of view of where my property is, and where this is along state road, I walk that often. And number of the properties along here, I have various types of sidewalks, okay? And this plan has an ending there with grass, okay? As far as I'm concerned, anytime anything is planned in Upper Providence, it should include a sidewalk. And it's not good enough to say that there's a full sidewalk on the other side of the street, because you gotta cross state road to do that. I draw your attention to what I have to do to go from twenty-three Green Hill Road to Rose Street Park in the whole township. And I have to cross, and I have to do this and that and this and that to get around the media bypass, right? Because no consideration has been given to ease of use of sidewalks throughout the entire province. My wife sat on the, on the committee about ten years ago when they were looking, making up the province a walkable township. And we ran into all sorts of obfuscation and objections, and we never did solve the issue of sidewalks. For example, Walden School, when I saw the initial plans of that, about fifteen years ago, guess what? They intended to take out that grass bank on Providence Road and put a sidewalk there. And they finally built it and did all the corrections to that property, that sidewalk never happened. So if I wanna walk from my house to this township building, I can't use a sidewalk for that one section. So we have to look at sidewalk anywhere in the township, okay? So that really, for the sake of just putting a little section there, you should have a sidewalk. Except, except it's not walkable right now, you can't walk this section, David? You can't walk that, it's coming six feet wide, eight to seven, there's a better shot. Yeah, so that's, and it leads into a sidewalk, right? You're getting rid of that planter and you've got grass coming right up. No, 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 we're keeping that. So you're actually putting in, keeping that, we're just repaving.
Okay, sorry, can we just, no, can I just see the line you're pointing to, where you're going to pave up, or where the grass is going to add? Okay, can you stop the planters?
Yeah.
Approximately the same.
Yeah, and then so there's the white stripe line, there's the shoulder, and then there's this entire section through here that's been walked up forever. It is a flat, it's not as though you have to walk in the roadway, that area, I'm sorry, David, I interrupted you. We've gotta know each other, we met, it's all. This one here is, it kind of shows it's just the, the road shoulder, and it doesn't line up with where the sidewalk is in front of the next property. It's gonna be everything here today was the final version, is we was taking out planters, we planted it young. That's what I'm saying, it doesn't show quite as well there.
Yeah, right, yeah.
That's, that's the value of your name, it's not a secret. That, that's, that area remains, I'm just kidding.
I'd like to point out that right there is currently, uh, half a percent fall from one side of the site, you know, so adding curve would possibly be problematic. We don't want to really bring that bonding issue, creating, uh, something right along the curve there.
Well, I'm not suggesting we raise sidewalks or create anything like that. I'm just saying walkable location. We will make sidewalks in our township, have a variety of looks. All I'm just having, looking for is continuous sidewalk as much as we want.
Yeah, it's driving the grass.
That just occurred to me as I was looking at these pictures and from, uh, your question. I had a chance, uh, to sit down with Mr. Lynn, uh, last week. He kindly gave me a call and asked me if I wanted to look at it because of our property's flexibility. And, and he answered most of my questions. I'm not, uh, somebody who is going to come and, uh, complain and try and get something out of something like this. Jack's were good neighbors, okay? They were, uh, a bar, so they were open later than this place is going to be. We've been there for twenty-two years, Jack's was there a long before we were there. We understand that we're neighboring onto, uh, a commercial area. So, um, we're, we're not looking to, to, uh, explode anything, uh, to try and take advantage for our property. We understand what it's like. Jack's was a good neighbor, we could set our clock by the way he, um, threw his, his glass. He guaranteed from day one that nothing would be going into dumpsters after ten o'clock at night. I'd hear the glass and it was ten o'clock and then nothing happened after that. I can say that three or four times over the years, maybe there was something, a little rock is happening there, and he took care of it. And, and it wasn't a problem. This looks like it's going to be, uh, an earlier, uh, in the day situation for us. So, uh, we even get an advantage over that, it's going to be a cleaner look. And I'm glad that, that it was, uh, pointed out, uh, number one about the area of, uh, landscaping. Uh, the thirty foot of landscaping between the building and our property line. And I'm glad that, that Bob also, uh, put on the record that they've offered to put the fence there, which is good. Because right now it's, it's a dilapidated chain link fence, looks terrible. And the new fence will be, uh, will fit in with the landscaping and create a division. Uh, that addresses, uh, two concerns we had. One is the drainage situation, which we have now, which will be dissipated. Uh, and the other is access. We don't want people, uh, coming down the slope into our back property. Our easement there is for the purpose of only our properties, all along Green Hill Road. And it is not there as a public byway. And so by putting that fence in there, that helps us out and, and, uh, means that anybody in the neighborhood or in surrounding neighborhoods that want to access this property are going to have to use the proper sidewalks and accesses instead of, instead of ours. So I'm glad that, that is on there. That, that seems to address our issues, the pictures you've got there, um, uh, two, three of the trees have disappeared, uh, just in the last little while. They're in those aerial views. Uh, one, uh, two of the trees that are neighboring this property are now gone. One was so old, it was about to fall down. And, you know, one in the front of our property was struck by lightning and had to come down because it split. So those aerial views are a little bit different from what we have. But, uh, so Bob has been able to, um, ease our opinions about it. And I think we can speak positively towards what is going to happen. As long as we don't leave any walk, or lose any walk in there. Thank you, thank you.
It's basically more of, it would be a problem to install sidewalk, I can address that publicly if, if you wish. We did meet on site and call them back, great. And I'll get into it because it's Pendot Road. We've had a string of problems between Mansell and Green Hill for years, many years. We've asked Pendot to look at stormwater installation, facility installation, of course they won't do that. So if we do raise, uh, a sidewalk.
Oh, okay, so I'm gonna let everyone hear you.
Yeah.
Uh, JP's going to address, um, we're asking about the sidewalk, um, from his viewpoint, you know, installing one that's similar to across the street. He's going to explain to us.
Yeah, we, uh, as, as Mr. Lynn said, we did meet on site, we discussed this, and we discussed everything with this, we discussed that great length. And the township has had, uh, years of problems with stormwater control between Mansell and Green Hill. And to raise an elevation to, to install sidewalk, you have to install curb, to raise that, we're going to create a, a bigger or exacerbate the stormwater problem. Because it is very flat and it, 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 it does tend to pond in this area, not much, but very little. Which I think can be addressed with paving when they pave. This site is, or this picture that I'm looking at in particular, and if you see down on this end, the, uh, of the property, there is a brick sidewalk, which is more or less sunk in, and, and on either side of it has grass, it's more raised on either side of it. And that sidewalk actually accumulates stormwater also. This, uh, one of the solutions we discussed is all of this will be paved out to the, the edge of pavement for the cartway. So this area can be improved for walking. But if we do anything to change the elevation, other than slightly with paving, we're going to change our stormwater flow that we have here and create ponding, uh, in front of, in front of that. So again, a sidewalk would include sidewalk, apron and curb. And that, that apron is where, pretty much exactly where you see here, is where you would have that pond. So until we can get stormwater control through Pendot's allowance, uh, in that, in that general vicinity, I, I really don't, I just simply don't think from a stormwater point of view, it's a good idea to change its elevation.
Well, and I wasn't trying to say a sidewalk should be created.
Well, I understand, I understand.
I know, we're addressing it so that we, we are all for sidewalks, but we're just willing to get from our, everyone's perspective on whether it's a good idea overall or not. Yeah, so that we can address and come up with the best resolution.
When you're talking about the elevation between Mansell and Green Hill, um, the, it was interesting because I brought it to the attention of the township manager about a year, year and a half ago, that, uh, backyard that, uh, on Mansell, that backed onto our easement laneway there, right at the Ridge Road extension, was actually taking the hose and pumping water out of his backyard of our easement and further exacerbating a problem which exists even now with, with rains out of our easement onto the corner of Ridge and Green Hill. And that really ponds anytime we have, uh, rain and you'll see it coming. Quite possibly, if there's any drainage left over from today, until tomorrow morning's thirty degrees, that whole intersection is icy because of the amount of water comes off of there. It's, it's unfortunate that we have that whole area that, uh, doesn't have any stormwater, uh, protection.
Until such time we get stormwater again, I think it's very sensitive, you know, we can't accumulate stormwater right here, obviously. I don't, honestly, I don't think we would, we would have to get a Pendot permit for that, and I just don't think that they would issue that until we have a place to control the storm.
Unfortunately, this is in progress by over twenty percent, so whatever is now flooding on impeded towards that location, I should be able to help a little bit by controlling the amount of water getting there. Because there's no management on the side of all of that.
And, and again, that's true, but it will be improved for pedestrian passing with blacktop.
I think it's, I, I mean, my opinion, I, I've walked that, I lived in that neighborhood for ten years, um, since I moved. And I walked that area, I think as long as that space is kept as it is, at least that portion, um, I felt safe there, just when you get further down, but that's not. For here, so yes. And you said there is going to be a fence, I know we discussed on the side, you know, like I was saying, your neighbor, there's going to be one also in the back. I'm for twenty-three, is that, I just want to see what your fence line is going to be.
Our fence line is, is going to be this.
Oh, in the back, okay, and what's on this?
This is a, this is a driveway all the way back here.
Right, is there anything going on between you and your neighbor on the right at all?
We're just going to keep, there's already a, a white, a white fence here.
There is, I thought so, yeah, I saw it in the picture, just wanted to make sure, okay.
We were going to keep, this house back at the end of this driveway is not in great condition.
Okay.
Um, but, um, there, there's a driveway leads back to a house behind the commercial with the only access, that driveway off of state.
And there's already a fence there and you're just going to put one along the back line there, okay.
I'm just trying to make sure I protect, you know, the rear where I have, because, because though, this is a, this is a commercial to the easterly side here.
Okay, great.
One other question, I think, well addressed, but I think it's important for the other record. But this is going to be a full demolition permit followed by a full construction permit. We're not going to be using, uh, a, uh, half measure of improvement permit or, or a, uh, repair permit to build any of this. The entire building is coming down, a whole new building is, is taking its place. I draw your attention to, uh, Republic Bank on the corner of Providence Road and Waldmore Pike. It used to be a Burger King. And that was, when the Burger King was torn down, they built that, uh, bank on a, uh, sort of repaired or.
Um, well, there's, there's games going out there where you do a partial demolition and you keep all your non-conformities and then you continue forward, but this is, this is branded.
So that's, yeah, so they, they tore it down all except for a ten foot wall and a door, one wall. And they did it on a, uh, not on a building permit, because this is going to be complete demolition and keep it. New building permit, that is important.
Yeah, absolutely right, we need to get building permits for new construction, yeah.
Yeah, my, my client's doing.
Sorry, the word I was looking for was a renovation permit, that's what we used on that particular building. It's a renovation permit. And I've seen that actually happen with a house that's on Mansell, that was rebuilt, it was a very large building. It was done on a renovation permit because they kept, um, one side wall of the house. And then totally rebuilt the house, they put neither one the same at all. It was done on a renovation permit, and we, we all should take place once.
A new building.
So drastically changing the nature of the building in there.
Bob, you're getting a building permit, isn't it?
Oh, yeah.
I thought so. Okay, just making sure, yeah.
This is, this is a tear down, a branded building. My client is obviously investing significantly in this site. And, um, I, I applaud them for that because this is not just a patch up Jack's Tavern, this is a branded building. It's part of making what I'm hoping to do. So I applaud them for that, for that investment.
Anybody else? I guess we'll go into our second session and we'll do the back back, okay? Thank you, everybody. We are okay with all of your waivers for preliminary and final. Um, and the four listed in JP's letter, addressing the stormwater management and the buffers. Subject to, uh, our preliminary waiver recommendation is subject to the conditions in JP's letter. Uh, we are going to ask you to consider, uh, moving the dumpster to another area or angling it differently for the neighbor. Um, delivery of the trucks, as we discussed, I know you said eight to six, but we're going to do our standard, um, eleven AM to seven PM, which we gave to Snooko and Wawa.
Eleven to seven?
Eleven, seven.
No, I'm sorry, the, the, my understanding was that the Snooko and Wawa was a prohibition against delivering between eleven PM and seven AM.
Eleven PM and seven AM, sorry, yes.
I asked the problem.
Um, uh, we're also requesting, uh, that you consider using the dynamic accessibility for the handicap sign. Because it seems to be a popular thing now in the community, instead of the standard handicap sign. Okay. And also, this is just a request, obviously you, you can meet the minimum foliage, uh, pursuant to our ordinances, but that you might look at installing maybe more bushes along the, uh, the street line or some trees that are low level, if possible.
Plus five foot fence in the rear, I think is a condition to do an attack.
Yes, please, yes, for your neighbor. Is that good? Those are recommendations, I just put forth that motion to approve.
Mr. Popery?
Yes.
Mr. Sorethan?
Yes.
Ms. Shane?
Yes.
Mr. Zach Mariah?
Yes.
Mr. Mark?
Yes.
Thank you, listening, showing off first of all, listening number two, and they're all incredibly reasonable conditions and they're all laws of the justice. I want this to be nice to you. I appreciate the time, for you. And JP, thanks for taking the time to walk with me, we do appreciate that. It's important to visit the site, you came to this with ten thousand foot view, so, thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
So move.